Okay, we are, we are live and broadcasting.
Yep.
Okay, um, so I'll just, I'll guess I'll start. Um, call to order the planning commission meeting from May 7th, 2020. Um, tonight, we do have a quorum. Um, all commissioners are here except for Commissioner Samick, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Um, so first up, um, public comments on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that has a comment on anything not on the agenda? Okay, uh, so I guess we'll close that. Um, next up, the consent calendar, uh, from the planning commission minutes from April 16th, 2020. Um, if anyone has comments on that, uh, then, um, go for it.
Uh, I have some comments. Um, I found that I was a little uncomfortable with these minutes. I'm wasn't that, um, confident that they really reflected the conversation, um, as accurately as I wanted. I'm not sure why. I can give you, um, some specific, uh, feedback. So under the first page on the public hearing, number two, um, the very bottom, uh, I mean, this is just a wordsmithing here, but Commissioner Meadows asked about separate ownership and why there are limits on the square footage for one bedroom, two bedrooms. And question there was specifically, why are there different limits, um, between those two for square footage? I mean, that's, um, dramatically. Um, but I, I don't know. For some reason, I just found myself uncomfortable, uh, with these minutes. I don't know if any of my other fellow commissioners had a similar feeling. I guess not.
Oh, I raised my hand.
I see Commissioner Bresik has her hand raised.
Can you see my little hand raised there?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Um, I wa- I actually listened to the meeting again today because I had the same unsettling feeling that Sally did. And you know, um, I thought that on page one, under the planning services manager presenting the staff report, that was the place where Jolie talked about the 12-foot setback for corner. Um, so that seemed like an important fact to get in there. On the second page, Chair Ahhi asked about the daylight plane question, um, whether it was legal at all for us to have a daylight plane if it wasn't prohibited? And Jolie had some good comments about that. Then, um, under what I said on the middle of that page, one big issue was the 800 square feet is mentioned three times in the state law at 850 only once. And then I mistakenly said 1250, what turned out to be 1200 square feet for the larger unit. Um, on the third page, um, Commissioner Meadows also, in addition to agreeing with the Palo Alto example preliminarily, also asked about other incentives we could devise to get the results we were interested in. And, and in the public comment, Chris Colstad and Walter Chapman proposed an alternative ADU type, which they explained with great detail. And at the bottom of page three, after Chair Ahhi, Go- Jolie carefully explained the concept of prevailing wage law, which I thought would intrigue people who were looking at the minutes. And then on the last page for me, um, I did talk about the daylight plane and people filling it. And I did ask whether the parking was covered or uncovered and what size it was. But most of my first comments were wordsmithing on actual language. Those other comments came later. And I did not ask for to provide a parking diagram. But Sally did bring up a point that wasn't mentioned, which was that a large basement ADU isn't covered the way it is written now. Um, Chair Ahhi asked for the best way to streamline the process. Jolie explained the difference between 1200, 850, and 800 square foot limitations. And both, um, Ahhi and Lee talked about how to tweak the daylight plane to get the effect we wanted. And the request was for samples of different effects, which I think we're going to get. So I covered everything that I listened to. And therefore, I would propose that we approve the minutes with those additions.
The, um, suppose Guido can capture that, that would be fine. Or take another, he can listen and take another stab. Um, but I, I definitely feel those, that those additions are critical. I mean, I was just uncomfortable. Also, page three, Commissioner Meadows agrees with the Palo Alto example. I mean, I, you know, that couldn't have been the only thing I said. And it just makes it, I, I don't know. I just was uncomfortable with the whole thing.
Th- this is John. If I might, um, why don't we, why don't you continue the minutes? We'll go back and include the recommendations of Commissioners Bresik and Meadows. And we'll bring these, a revised version back to you at your next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, I think, I think Phoebe, I think you're muted.
I withdraw my previous motion and instead move that we continue acceptance of the minutes to the next meeting.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? I think we probably have to do a roll call, right, John?
Yes, we should.
Okay.
Let me, let me go through that.
Okay.
For the motion, commis- I mean, Chair Mayruse John Ahhi.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Runit Bodnar.
We're moving to mo- to move this discussion, right? Not to actually vote on the minutes?
Yeah, you're, you're moving to continue the minutes. Uh, Commissioner Phoebe Bresik.
Aye.
Commissioner Duho Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner David Merrick. Commissioner David Merrick, there we go. That's okay. And Commissioner Sally Meadows.
Aye.
Got it. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, uh, thank you so much for that. And then, um, so next up, public hearing, zoning text amendment ZTA 20-0001. Um, and I'll hand it off to Guido for his presentation.
Righty. Thank you, planning commission. I'm here with our city attorney and as well as, uh, John Biggs. Can you guys see my PowerPoints?
Yes.
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 So I'm not going to go through every edit. We, I did a pretty extensive, detailed staff report that identified all the edits that were requested by the commission. I broke them out by, uh, the ones requested by the state, the commission, and then some friendly amendments from staff. So I'm hoping tonight to, to go over the higher level ones. Yeah, so the, the edits that are in green were from the commission. Yellow were the ones identified by state HCD. And blue were the friendly amendments requested by staff. So we'll just start off right off the bat in terms of a staff edit. The chief building official requested that the living area definition referenced California residential code, um, not the California building code. So we would ask that you make that friendly amendment. Um, there was a request to add a chart, which a chart has been added. Uh, Commissioner Bresik did make some, um, requested edits to that to make it clear that, that you don't have to build an 800-square-foot ADU. Um, that you, you obviously can build one lower. Uh, during the production of the second staff report, I did reach out to City of San Jose staff. And because these can go up to 16 feet, uh, we're always trying to reduce privacy impacts to neighbors. So there is a requested staff edit for if there's any potential second-story windows that they have an increased seal height of 60 inches. Uh, the next major topic from the last meeting was the, uh, daylight plane. And where the commission landed was to have an eight-foot daylight plane with a 612 roof pitch. That seemed to be acceptable to members of the community and the design professionals. Uh, next up, Commissioner Bresik asked about, well, what happened? Or actually, a couple commissioners asked, um, what happens for the ADUs that are not streamlined? So some language has been inserted into the ordinance. Um, and actually reviewed by state HCD, uh, to make it clear that while planning departments have discretion over the non-streamlined ADUs, that we still have to keep it, basically limit our discretion as much as possible and make it clear that you just have to follow whatever the objective standards are, then you will, you'll get your approval. Uh, the next issue that kind of came up during production was junior ADUs, uh, doing some additional research based on the first meeting. Um, so as you guys are aware, the state law is written and it says, if you have a junior ADU, you can do 150-square-foot expansion to the house for the JADU, so long as it's done for ingress, egress purposes. Um, polling different cities. So the question came up, well, what happens if I want to do an addition? Um, can I have that as part of the house? And I think our initial answer is still correct. By state law, the JADU should be within the confine of the house. Uh, but some cities, as you can see from the slide, I've gotten a mixed response. Some are allowing it as part of the addition. Some of them are saying, no, you can only go 150 square feet past the house, and that's per state law. So that's a discussion point for the commission to decide for tonight. And this is the exact language from the state laws. Uh, Commissioner Bresik asked about how many ADUs the planning department approved. This is actually from the city's annual housing progress report. The planning department did approve approximately 24 last year. Uh, the other major kind of discussion point was additional incentives. And the commission asked staff to provide additional daylight planes for those ADUs that have an additional setback, a voluntary setback, that the state wanted to be clear that the ordinance has to say it's voluntary. Um, so I have a series of daylight planes and I'll, I'm just going to show them. They are in the packet as attachment and C, or B, I'm sorry. Um, we can talk about these in detail. I'm just going to go through them. And then the next major kind of discussion point, or whatever we want to call it, and I'll, Jolie can chime in later on. But we had a whole, uh, lengthy discussion about, uh, prevailing wage. And Jolie and her team were able to do some additional research. So, um, a potential incentive either for height or setback or kind of whatever we want to do above state law could be that if you set the permit fees to zero, that would not trigger prevailing wage. Um, or you could just reduce, um, as a waiver or a reduction just. But it has to, basically the gist and Jolie can explain it better. The, the gist of it is we can't, um, treat customers differently in terms of the fee. If it's set at a certain level, then according to, uh, Jolie's additional research, that would not trigger the prevailing wage. Uh, so at this time, uh, staff is recommending changes, uh, to the zoning text amendment, the zoning text amendment 20-001. Um, I would point out, uh, we do have some members of the community here. Uh, Walter Chapman is a long-serving, uh, member of the community. And he did want to have three minutes to talk about a proposal in terms of square footage is in the house. I have his slides up and I defer to the chair and vice chair, uh, when you would like to hear from, uh, Mr. Chapman. So that, that concludes my initial presentation. I have a whole bunch of other slides we can go over, but I just wanted to kind of do a, a general overview at first.
Sure, um, thank you, Guido. Um, I, I guess, uh, I wouldn't be opposed to having, uh, Walter, um, make the presentation now unless there's something as to why maybe he can't do it for public comment. But, uh, I, I don't see any reason why he can't do it now.
Okay, that, that's your discretion, the chair?
Yeah. Okay, so. I don't have any, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
We can see you too.
You can, alright, because I can't hear any of you. My speaker isn't working. Um, one second.
Hello. Fine, welcome.
See if that did it. Well, I'm just going to go ahead with my presentation. I don't need to hear you, you just need to hear me. So this was an example of a property I brought up last week, where the Colstad family was asking me if I could help them with the design, and we came up with this dilemma. Uh, the state is proposing the ability to have the detached units in the backyard with a four-foot setback. And Guido, if you could, the owner didn't necessarily want to use up their backyard. And this was a dilemma that I've run into with several property owners. And they've been asking me what they can do instead. So one of the things that I, we looked at, Guido, if you could go to the next slide, was what would happen if you then did an attached unit to the house? And as you can see here, this preserves the backyard, but it also cuts off the visibility of the yard from the primary residence. So then we looked into a third option, and we'll go to that one next. Do it, please, Guido. This is a concept of an integrated ADU. And the issue here is that we were trying to use part of the existing residence, an existing bedroom and bathroom, to be the bedroom and bathroom for the ADU, and then build on a kitchen and living space, uh, that did not encroach into the rear yard. This preserves the rear yard, accomplishes the goal of an ADU, but in the process, the homeowner is losing square footage from their primary residence. So what we are looking at doing is, well, why could we not reclaim the square footage that is lost? Because by zoning rule, they're allowed their 35% floor area ratio on this property. And that we're showing then is a small addition of equivalent square footage being added to the house for the portion that was given up to be part of the ADU. Um, but there is not currently an allowance for this in the way the ordinance is written. So what I'm referring to this to is an integrated ADU. And Guido, can we click to one more? So I have another client, this is not the Colstad client property. They have existing bedrooms on their main floor of their house, two bedrooms and a bathroom, that they would like to convert into an ADU and instead put two bedrooms and a bathroom on the upper floor. Well, the net result from this is you still end up with the 800-square-foot ADU that meets the state's goals and objectives. And the homeowner still gets to retain their allowed square footage by expanding their primary residence. Now, if this were to be done, this would require that the ADU be a separate, true separate living unit, which is the requirement for an ADU. You'd have to have separate utilities, you know, heat, electric, et cetera, a separation wall between the units. So this is not allowing the homeowner to get 800 more square feet to their primary residence because once again, you're gener- you're creating a separate living unit in the process. Now, I'm going to change to a different screen with Guido. Just for a moment, do patience. What we're looking at here. Can you see what's been seen from my screen, please, if you can? Alright, so what you're looking at here, this is in Mountain View.
Walter, I don't.
You have submitted in Mountain View.
You have to share your screen.
For an attached or integrated ADU.
Walter, it's really hard to see as it's too large for the screen to.
I'll clarify that for.
Is there a timeframe for how long this presentation is going to be? Mayruse, do you have in mind how long?
I'm really.
Um, yeah, one second. I'm not sure what's happening.
The request was for three minutes and we're at the three-minute mark.
It's doing a reverse image for some reason, it's mirroring the image. Walter, sorry, Walter, I'm, Walter, I'm going to have to cut you off, if that's okay. Are you there? It will become clear now. I don't think he can hear us. So what this homeowner is proposing to do.
Um, I don't think Walter can hear us, that's part of the problem.
Yeah.
Uh, his, his, his client is actually on the, I believe his client is on the call, Chris? Is it Chris Colstad, is that?
Can I just interject here, um, at just a point of order, why we're doing a presentation after the staff presentation by a member of the public that feels, um, like it really belongs in public comment?
Yeah, I, uh, I probably, uh, made a mistake. I thought it was more informative and not a, a personal, um, uh, thing. I thought it was just kind of general, uh, discussion. Um, but yeah, if we could probably shift from this then and then go to, um, any questions for, for Guido?
Yeah, I, so just to help Walter out, because I don't think he can hear us and he's still, it's like he's still going on. So, so let me pull up my, because I actually had a pretty extensive conversation with him. So if you got, can you see my slides now?
Yes.
Yes.
So just to summarize, I'll just, I, I made a slide because I knew he was going to speak tonight. So just to help him out, let me find, uh, my, kind of what he was trying to get at. Um, so, you know, like everybody else, our, our views are evolving on these state laws as we get more input from the state and other cities. So basically what he's trying to do is that if you can see up on my screen, I just made up a fictitious house. And let, let's just say the house has 3,800 square feet for max, uh, total FAR. And then if you add an 800-square-foot ADU, it's about 4,600. And what I believe Walter's trying to articulate is, so if you take, say, 500 square feet of the main house for a remodel for an ADU, and then you add 300 square feet to get an 800-square-foot total ADU, and then you take the 500 square feet that he did for the remodel and add it, say, to another part of the house, I mean, you still do get the 4,600 square foot max. When I started this process three or four months ago, I don't know if that necessarily was what the state intended. But if you treat it like a remodel, as long as you're not exceeding the square footage, potentially there's an opportunity to kind of do what Walter's proposing. So that's basically the gist of what he's trying to say.
Okay, so it's kind of, uh, asking for a new category, um, or new, a new subset of, of an ADU?
Yeah, or also, and, and for me principally as one who enforces it, to be open to this.
Sure.
In previous conversations, and I even told the commission two weeks ago that, ah, I don't know. But when I actually sat down and talked to him for an hour and spoke with a couple other cities, I mean, if you're not blowing past the FAR, there's potentially to interpret that in, in the way that he's proposing. But that really has to, you know, the commission has to agree to that and council has to agree to that.
I.
Okay.
Could I interject one last comment, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like. To.
If we could go to the last two squi- slides, if you don't mind, just so the commissioners can understand why this is important to the community? Uh, sorry, Walter, if, if you could just hold off until the public comment, because we just have to run through some questions for staff first. Um, and then we can get to your, um, public comment, if that's okay. Uh, so.
We can discuss this during our discussion point, because I think.
That too.
Phil was pretty good with it.
Sure. Um, so does anyone have any comments for staff, um, in general on anything? Yes, Phoebe?
My questions are for Jolie, really.
Okay.
Goes to kind of what was just going on with Walter. Is, can we recommend to city council that Los Altos be more proactive to, um, not only comply with the state laws, so we're meeting the requirement that our regs match the state law, but can we in addition be proactive and more lenient, more encouraging to ADU in the context of just what we saw? If we propose that in addition to the categories of a 500-square-foot JADU and an 850-square-foot detached ADU and a 1,200-square-foot bigger ADU, could we also propose a new category that the state hasn't looked at yet? Are we allowed to go further as long as we're compliant? So that's my question for Jolie. And the second one is, when she said there could be a fee schedule, what does it mean on page 10? Um, would we publish a fee, a fee schedule that said, if you're further away from the property line and costs you less, is that allowed? Or is it just across the board something? Two questions.
Um, and I'll let Guido chime in as well. But from our further research on the junior ADUs that needed to be within the confines of the, and how that's been interpreted, and now how more city, I think that HCD is interpreted, as you have to understand over the last months, there are becoming more trends in the interpretation. And at first, there were very, um, strict interpretations. And now, and you know, Guido talked to HCD and they seem to be okay with expanding the dwelling unit to allow a junior ADU if it was in our ordinance, correct, Guido?
That's correct.
And so it's in our ordinance, so we're not just doing it ad hoc, case by case, or letting someone do it and someone else not do it. But we, we need to have it in our ordinance. And then the issue with prevailing wage, um, we have tried to be very, um, uh, creative with this. Um, instead of having it be seen as a public monies into a private project, well, there is an ADU permit fee. We could change the permit fee and just set it as, we're not waiting that it's charged. It could be a waiver.
Jolie, you're breaking up.
Yeah, and, okay, and then, um, but we would have to, um, we have a perm- we have a fee schedule. So if we're going to do this, we have to amend our, our fee schedule. And there is an ADU permit fee, um, that we would have to, um, go in. And that's adopted by the city council. So if they're going to go along with this, we would amend our fee schedule.
But we're all, in each case, what I hear you saying, Jolie, is the state philosophy is, if what we're doing is in our ordinance and is encouraging more ADUs, the state will look on it generally with favor as long as it's not in opposition to any of the strictures they've already applied.
Yeah, we can always do more, we just can't do less than what the state requires. And the state is the floor and we can raise the ceiling and, and do more. And, and whatever we end up coming up with here and what the council comes up with, we still have to run it by HCD. And hopefully, they're, they're not going to change their mind. Because trust me, um, it almost is who you ask and what day you ask, um, some of these interpretations. And I think Guido would shake his head saying, yes, it's, it is, um, it is all, all very subject to interpretation.
It's in flux. Thank you, Jolie, that answers the essence of my questions.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Phoebe. Um, does any, do any other commissioners? Thank you, Phoebe, um, does any, do any other commissioners have any questions for staff?
I, um, I do, if I can go, I'm not raising my virtual hand, I'm raising my actual.
Oh, sure, go for it.
Yeah, okay.
I have some after you as well.
Okay. Um, so this is picking up right where we were just discussing with Phoebe and Jolie, um, so the incentives, uh, and the permit fees, so I don't see how we're differentiating, um, those, cause didn't we say somewhere in the, uh, report that these had to be offered to everybody? And so if everybody, I guess maybe it depends how you write it, but the way I read the slide is, everybody could reduce, um, you know, get these lower fees, is there an if they do? How do they get them? If everyone gets it, then how is it an incentive to be a good neighbor?
That's a good point, that's a good point. I'm not sure if Jolie wants to chime in.
Well, um, the, well, we're incentivizing ADUs generally, not just good neighbor incentives, so it would be, um, across the board, I don't see, we could, um, I mean, we could look at it some more, but, um, I would be worried, um, with trying to incentivize, um, some ADUs and not all ADUs, but, I mean, Guido and I could look at it some more, but, um, you know, I was just trying to come up with, um, some way to incentivize all ADUs by reducing permit fees, and, and we don't know if council's gonna go along with that, because, you know, fees are fees, and they help offset city costs, so.
Right, okay, so that does answer the question that, yes, it's incentivizing ADUs, but it's not incentivizing good neighbor behavior, which is, I think, where we were originally trying to, to go, so, um, which would bring up the discussion, and we can have that later, as to, hold on, what are we going to potentially offer to incentivize? Um, so, I'm trying to see if I have any other questions versus, uh, just discussion items, I think the most of the rest of it is just gonna be discussion, so that will be, that's my only question for clarification.
Okay, uh, Ronit, did you wanna go next?
Yeah, thank you, um, I just wanted to get a li- a little bit more context, maybe you discussed this a little last week, but you mentioned there are twenty-four applications approved, uh, in twenty nineteen, and I'm just wondering, like, what the cliff was for twenty twenty before, um, quarantine? Like what?
Uh, it was, it was pretty extensive, I've, I started with the city in December, and probably not a day would go by that people were asking us or wanting to submit, and we've been having to tell people to hold off, just because we were trying to create the regulations, so, yeah, we're probably gonna far exceed the twenty-four.
Okay, and then, um, also, in, in terms of, like, what percentage are involving these junior ADUs versus, um, the larger separated offerings?
Uh, we've seen a handful, I think, honestly, what's gonna happen is we ca, it's more of an educational, we need to educate the designers and the community, and then I think you'll probably see more, cause it, you know, the way they wrote the state laws, it's a little confusing, but for now, most of the bulk has been on the, the detached ADUs.
And are they new, new construction or, um, remodels?
New, and a lot of them under the seven hundred and fifty, cause if you guys recall, the seven hundred and fifty or less don't have to pay the impact fees, which, you know, can be costly, so.
And then, can you remind me, once these are built, what, like, level of, um, oversight does the city have on them in terms of who is able to utilize them, or do we not have any?
Um, so, the state took away some of our, well, so, we, it used to be that cities could, uh, make, um, uh, either the, the owner live in either the detached unit or the house, the owner occupancy deed restriction, um, that got taken out, um, they did still keep in the state law, you can't do the short-term rentals for these, um, so that, uh, there are, there are some other stuff that, uh, Councilwoman Flagar asked me to follow up on in terms of our housing element, but I'm not sure if that's part of your question, so.
Okay, no, those, I, that's, I just wanted some of that background information, thank you.
Okay, um, does anyone else have any questions for staff? I had, if, if not, then I had, uh, a couple. Um, this might be a, a silly question, but the no impact fees under seven hundred and fifty square feet, um, is there a reason why it doesn't just go up to eight hundred? Um, or is that because it, it would make sense since the eight hundred is the minimum that the state allows? So I didn't know if the seven fifty, is that just a state thing, or is that what we're saying?
Uh, that's actually written into the state laws.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It just seemed like.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just chime in.
Sure.
It was eight hundred, and, because now they have to throw in another number, so you've got seven fifty for, for this, eight fifty for this, so no, I'm being facetious, but they, it, it was in the state law, seven fifty or less, no impact fees.
Sure, okay, um, and then, for the architectural review, um, in the packet, it said that architectural review for units over eight hundred fifty-one square feet, so if it's under, if it's eight fifty or below, what type of review would then, it would trigger? I was just curious about that.
Uh.
I think it's on page.
Yeah, probably over the counter, setback, setbacks height, lock coverage.
Okay, so just kind of a over the counter kind of chart?
Yeah, that's where the, that's where the states, well, at le, at least for now, until the interpretation changes, but, uh, that's what the state's telling us, just to make it clear that those are not a, so i- in planning world, there's discretionary and ministerial, discretionary is, you know, I use my judgment as a planner. This is in ministerial, which is, if you meet the requirements, we check the box, you get your permit, so this is, they're trying to push everything into more of the ministerial.
Okay, got it, um, and then, yeah, sorry, that was it. Um, so those are all my questions, if anyone else has any, uh, yes?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I have one, yeah, just around, uh, I think it's your page four of your slide, slide deck here, around the chart. Um, still not hundred percent clear on the difference between the eight hundred square foot and the eight fifty. Um, are we saying eight hundred is the minimum allowed for detached accessory dwelling units? And then right below it, you say, a minimum size for, for detached accessory unit shall be eight fifty.
Yeah, and this, this is the part of the state that just kinda confounds everybody, it, I, it, but you have, you have to read the eight hundred in light of the whole paragraph, with the example, um, was, you know, if you have a twelve hundred square foot house, and the, the way that that section of the ordinance is read, you could potentially be limited to a fifty percent change, which would only get you six hundred square feet, and the state specifically asked me to put in that last sentence to say, yeah, the six hundred, but you get a minimum of the eight hundred.
So you get, you will get bumped up to eight hundred?
Yeah, I know it's confusing, and even when I was on the phone with the guy, I was, I was like, okay.
Why not bump, why not bump it up to eight fifty?
I mean, you, you could, that's, that's the discretion of, I mean, if you go above state law.
So, Guido, a quick question on that, so, in other words,
General lobbyist.
In other words, if, if your house is above seventeen hundred square feet, then does that mean that, you know, then you would get the eight fifty because of the fifty percent, so is, is it kind of, cause that's how I interpreted the eight hundred, so it's basically if your house is under seventeen hundred, then you would go to eight hundred as the minimum, but if it's over seventeen hundred, then you could get the eight fifty, is that kind of what?
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, that's a good way to explain it, that's fine.
So the house size basically determines the eight hundred or the eight, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But honestly, if the commission wants to recommend that that be eight fifty, just for clarity, I mean, that's, that's a recommendation the commission can make, and couns, council can take that or not, or?
Sure, I mean, in, in other scenario, I think the language could be a little bit clearer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause, uh, you know, Chair Agi was able to infer that, but, um, if I'm a homeowner, homeowner, I could be a little lost.
Yeah, and I might be wrong too, I don't know.
Well, can I speak up, can you hear me?
Yes, Phoebe.
Okay, so I spent a lot of time on this chart, later, I sent one to, earlier, to, um, Guido, but I think that there's a category that's missing, and that would clarify what Duho was asking on one level. So, if the first category, instead of being the JADU, was eight hundred and fifty square feet is the largest allowed studio or one bedroom, and twelve hundred is the largest allowed two-bedroom ADU, that's the first thing. Then when we get to the, what's now the third square, which is the eight hundred square foot one, it should say, I think, the total floor area for an attached or detached, question mark, two-bedroom or greater accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed the twelve hundred square feet. Notwithstanding this, the last sentence should read, notwithstanding this, an ADU of eight hundred square feet or smaller shall not be denied or is allowed, because that clarifies that it's only relative to this fifty percent rule. Then when you go down to the next one, again, it's, we can't really keep saying minimum size, cause that implies that that's the size that you have to build, so the eight hundred and fifty square feet should say, a detached ADU of eight hundred and fifty square feet or smaller shall not be denied for size or is allowed. And then, the last one becomes repetitive, because if you've made the third one, eight hundred square feet slash twelve hundred, and you've explained that the total floor area for an attached or detached two-bedroom is greater is twelve hundred, and we know that eight hundred is, cannot be denied in this situation if it's the fifty percent rule we're working with, then you don't need the last column at all. I don't know if that got through, but, I really was focused on the fact that we have to be clear about whether it's attached or detached, and is there differential in the state law? That's the first thing, and second is, that we don't wanna say what minimum size is, it's minimum that the state says we have to do, but for someone coming in from the outside, just looking at this, a member of the public would say, oh, I have to build eight hundred and fifty square feet, or I have to build twelve hundred square feet, when in fact, they could do it or less. So I think that's something that needs to be done, and then I think if you start by saying eight hundred and fifty square feet is the largest allowed studio or one bedroom, and twelve hundred is the largest allowed two-bedroom ADU, that's a base definition that everyone can get to.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would agree with, uh, what Phoebe said, I think that that's a, a really good comment.
I think that, yeah, it needs, it needs, uh, to be much clearer than it is, and I'll, and I'll save my comments for, um, I have some comments on that table as well, um, but I'll save them for the discussion, because, um, we previously say elsewhere that if you have an attached or a contained within ADU that's in basement area, you don't, they're not limited to twelve hundred. So we still have inconsistency in that table, we'll address it in the discussion period, so I think the table needs, it's a great first step, but it, it needs work.
Okay, um, so, if there's nothing else, then I will open it up to public comment now. Um, and then, so I don't know if, do you wanna unmute?
Yes, hold on, trying to.
No problem.
Trying to do too much at once, um, who do you wanna speak first?
Um.
I guess we'll just unmute everybody, and then, unmute everybody?
Yep.
There we go, everybody's unmuted?
Sure, on, on my screen, uh, Chris Kohlstadt, did you wanna go first?
Oh, I, I just joined, cause I, I was interested in, in hearing what Walter had to say, um, with.
Oh, okay.
Um, I, I would be happy to chime in, um, when, after Walter speaks, if, um, if I could.
Okay, sure, so I guess in that case, I'll, I'll go to Walter then, um, I think everyone, yeah, so three minutes, if you wanna finish that point you were making earlier?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize that I was in the, uh, staff time, I thought it was in the three-minute timeframe.
Sure.
Um, Guido, there was a, there was a slide I had provided, two slides, one that's, uh, properties with detached ADUs, could you find that one?
Sure, let me, uh, hold on a second. My computer is, my mouse is acting up, one second.
The point I was making earlier is, if ADUs are allowed to be integrated into the primary structure, then you'll end up with less ADUs in people's backyards, detached ones. And I was, the diagram I'm asking Guido to find shows a typical neighborhood with AD units in all the backyards, and it gives you a sense of how much density that's gonna create in the community. Whereas, and I also did another diagram, let's click through those, Guido, thank you. One, keep going, okay, here you go, this is showing a general neighborhood with a series of ADUs placed in various directions, four feet from side yards and rear yards. And what you see is you, you know, with eight properties and eight ADUs, you might say, well, this may not happen, but over a period of ten, fifteen, twenty years, once you have an ordinance that allows this, this could be our future. Now, if you click to the next one, the next slide, this shows a series of integrated ADUs, attached ADUs, partially integrated, or fully integrated ADUs. And you can see what happens, is now there's no need for ADUs in the rear yards, it opens up the neighborhood again. You get the impression now of larger homes, but they're further apart, and it retains the openness in our neighborhoods. This is above and beyond what the state is asking for, the state has talked about detached units, attached units, and junior ADUs. What I'm talking about is simply allowing, if it makes sense, to integrate an ADU partially or completely into an existing house, and then span, expand the primary residence to its allowable square footage, and what you'll get is a series of larger homes and open yards. And if this could be encouraged, cause I have two or three people who would like to do this, they don't wanna build in their backyards. And I'm doing this in Mountain View right now, for an integrated ADU, and they have no problem with it, because they don't feel it interferes with the state's objective. So the question is, can the commission consider a, an, an additional option to the state saying, if we are allowed them to be integrated, and again, this isn't junior ADUs, these are full ADUs, they'd still need to meet all the requirements for fire separation, and, um, you know, electricity and heating, um, the difference is they'd need to be clearly separated within the structure from the primary residence, that's it.
Thank you, Walter, um, and then, sorry, if you could go back to the speaker view, um, if I can see if there's anyone else. Um, so, Susan Russell, did you have a comment? Oh, I think she's muted.
I've unmuted everybody, so.
No.
Oh, okay, maybe she muted, um, Greg Popovich, um, did you have a comment?
Uh, yes, uh, this is Greg Popovich with Gold Park Builders, um, thank you for considering the daylight plan and how to make it workable for everyone, I've reviewed the eight foot with a six and twelve pitch, and that should work for the majority of the units, while still, uh, you know, but doing your goal of not having sixteen-foot units on the, the property line or four foot away, um, that is an acceptable alternative to having none. That is an acceptable alternative to having none at all. And so thank you for considering that, and I'm in full support of the eight-foot with the six and twelve pitch.
Okay, thank you, Greg. And then I see Al. Did you have a comment?
Uh, no, I'm, you know, I think I've seen the presentation from uh, and I saw the daylight plan. I just heard Greg talk about that. Uh, to me, that strikes a good balance, I think, already. I know there's a concern here uh, you know, potentially allowing people to integrate the ADU into the house. Part of me wonders if that just means whether they'll build bigger houses and not really rent them out because I'm not sure you rent out a unit that's, you know, integrated into your house. I'm not sure that serves the affordable housing requirement, but I get where Walter's sort of going, but it does feel like that may not be in the spirit of things. But when it comes to the daylight plan, as Greg pointed out, it does feel like a good compromise has been reached with the eight-foot plate and the six-twelve slope. Seems like a good compromise. Thank you.
Sure, uh, thank you, Al. And then there's a phone number, six-five-oh-three-four-six-eight-one-eight. Or sorry, three-four-six-four-eight-one-eight. Did you have a comment? Okay, maybe not. Um, and then if Susan Russell or Mike Butenski or Chris Kohlstad, I don't know if any of you had a comment that you wanted to speak on.
I I I would. This is Chris Kohlstad.
Okay, go for it.
Yeah, um, so I I I I'm sorry, the the last person that commented about the larger homes. I I I get that and I've I've been against that myself in areas and also, you know, with the overlays we've had with, you know, two-story homes and and all that sort of thing as well. And I'm, you know, not not really for larger homes in Los Altos. However, at the same time, I'm asking for a larger home, so. But i- in my case, it's actually more for an additional family actually living in the home and actually my son uh, living in and managing a rental that would be existing at my at my house. The, you know, the the part that that I I guess gets to me is it 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 seems like the state law allows you, if if we were to come to you and say, here's the house I want to build on virgin land and it included a junior ADU, that that would be allowed. And it would be counted as additional square footage. So in theory, I could go and bulldoze my entire house right now. I could design a new one that had a, you know, a junior ADU that was included, that was exactly the same as my existing house, and go and get that approved. However, I can't use my existing house and remodel it. And and so there's something that's wrong with that equation. And I and I understand that that was kind of the equation that was posted in the presentation that I think Guido had shown. You know, but that's that's kind of what we're up against, and it just kind of seems kind of silly that that's not allowed in that way. That, you know, a brand-new house, you know, would be approved under the rules, but not a remodel. And it just doesn't really make sense. Anyway, that that's my comment.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chris. Um, Mike Butenski, did you have a a comment?
No comments. I was just interested in Walter's proposal for the integrated ADU.
Sure, no problem, thank you. Um, does anyone else have a comment? Anyone else that I missed? No? Okay. Um, so with that, I'll close public comment. Uh, if you do have a comment, then just write in the chat and then I'll try to see it. Um, so I'll close public comment and then open up for a discussion. So, um, Sally, you're first on my screen, so I don't know if you want to go first.
Okay, I'll try. I must admit, I for some reason, I thought although we had some changes to suggest last week, I thought it was more clear last week. To me, this week is somehow more confusing. Maybe that's just me. One more week of shelter in place and the brain has gone to mush. I don't know. Um, but let me see if I can, you know, some of it is that we're using a different terminology and I I don't know that it's correct to say, and this is to do with some of the speakers just now, that we don't allow integrated ADUs. I mean, they are allowed. They're allowed as a JADU and they're also allowed as a regular ADU. So so if I recall from Walter's presentation last week, it wasn't that they're not allowed, it was something to do with maybe the square footage of the house and that you got approval for additional square footage if it was um, you know, if you weren't adding on to the house or something like that. I don't recall, but I think to just say that we're not allowing integrated ADUs is is not correct. They are, both as an ADU as a and a JADU. Um, and maybe I'm wrong, and if so, someone can correct me with that. Now, let me try to go through. It's hard to do this.
Yeah, Sally, I was gonna, um, I was actually gonna propose that maybe if we want to go through the the different categories, kind of like last time, so first we can talk talk through the categories and the integrated ADU, then we can jump to the daylight plane. And then the third thing, we can see if there's any, you know, et cetera miscellaneous. So maybe that'll kind of focus it a little bit better. Um, so I guess first up, just the, I guess the table, the categories, the integrated kind of discussion, if you want to maybe just speak on that first.
Okay, so the table, yeah, so again, great first step. Uh, and you've had some comments about, we've made comments around how to add some clarity to that. Some of this, I'm going to go back and forth. Can you just kind of minor stuff, but then larger questions. So in the one talking about the seven hundred and fifty square feet, it it says, it talks about if an accessory dwelling unit is seven hundred and fifty-one square feet or more, impact fees can be charged, but it must be proportionate to the size of the main house. So I don't recall how we, I mean, do we have a formula for that or, you know, I didn't see reference to that. How do we come up with that? And maybe it doesn't matter, maybe that schedule already exists and that's not changing. But that, I had one question about that. Then the eight hundred square foot in the next category, I'm on the table again. Or still, I should say. So here's where we get into some of the difficulty in terminology. So a detached ADU is fairly clear. We know that's hovering somewhere in the yard. But then there's attached ADUs, which can be sort of share a wall, but be attached, but be but you could almost, if you could pull it apart, it it's it's like a detached ADU that's that's pasted up against the house. But then you have these, what we're also calling attached ADUs, that are actually within the dwelling. And so, and then, of course, you have a JADU, which is also within the dwelling and is is its own special definition. So in the eight hundred square foot here, which we've already talked about how, you know, Phoebe has explained how it should be written, but let's see where I was going with this. It says shall not, so shall not be more than fifty percent of the flare area. But we have different rules, again, whether in some of these categories around whether we're including basement areas or not. So in detached units, I think we're pretty clear that basement areas count towards the total square footage. But does it actually count towards really calculating whether it's less than fifty percent of the floor area of of the house? Because, you know, we don't count basement square footage. So that may not be clear, but let's let me give an example, which is if you have, let's say you have a twelve hundred square foot detached ADU and it's six hundred and six hundred and in the ground floor and the basement, then, and your house is, what would be the number? So if if you're only counting the six hundred at ground floor, your house, you can then it's one, I'm I'm not being very clear here at all, sorry, but if you include that basement, you may rule out an ADU because of the square footage in the in the basement area of that ADU. So I'm not sure whether that's what we're doing, because in other sections, we're actually excluding basement areas, though that might be because that's in an attached. So to me, it was kind of confusing. Let's see. Yeah, so that I'll that I'll just stop there because we're talking about the table and that's that's my comments on that one.
Okay, Sally, did you have any comments on the integrated? I know you kind of started with that, but did you have any comments on if we should explore the integrated option?
Well, I think, um, so yes, it intuitively makes sense that if you're going to have square footage and you're, you know, arranging it around the site, I think it is is better to be able to allow, to incent those things to be with the house, whether whether, you know, flush up against it or incorporate it. To me, that makes sense, but again, I don't think we're ruling out integrated now. What we're ruling out is whatever the situation that actually Walter described better last time as to why he couldn't do it. So today, you made the great case, Walter, as to why it would make sense to put those pieces, you know, sort of next to the house or incorporate it, but you kind of didn't make the point as to why you can't do it now because we do allow integrated. And maybe last week you said something about it was a two-step process and you know, but I I I kind of lost the thread as to why what you were proposing isn't doable, because you're right. I think common sense-wise, it should be.
I think I can explain that if my mic's on, which is you got the first step, Sally. I think that was pretty clear that it's advantageous to have it not as a separate building if you don't exceed the FAR. The point that Walter was making is that if you're going to use up some of your existing house, you should get that back to be able to use maybe in another place. You don't actually lose it from making the ADU part of it. And an advantage that Walter didn't talk about is if it's part of the main building and within the main building envelope within our setbacks, we have much greater control in the planning department because it's not subject to the four-foot rules and all the other over overarching controls that you have for a single-family detached house apply. So there can be design review, there can be window location control. There's an advantage to it, but I think the the answer to your question before I exceeded that was that if you took five hundred square feet from your house and turned it into an ADU and added three hundred square feet more, so now you have an eight hundred square foot ADU, you should get credit for that five hundred square feet and be able to add it back somewhere else. Did I get that right, Walter? You can nod? Yeah, okay.
And to me, that makes sense because that's actually, maybe that's the incentive we're we, one of the incentives we've been looking for that has been missing from this, but I guess the only reason they're precluded is because they're already at their floor area ratio on the lot aside from the ADU component. Is that is that what the case is?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Phoebe, did you want to talk about the categories or the integrated units or anything?
Well, I I am in support of the concept of the integrated units as long as we set the limit to an eight hundred square foot ADU, which then whatever space you borrowed from the main house, you'd get credit back even if exceeded. Well, it would not exceed the eight hundred plus whatever your FAR limit was. So that's no different, and I do see a lot of advantage to that. I do believe that I can send Guido, after we finish discussing the table, some of my more interesting edits on this in terms of getting it. What I feel is clear language for someone coming from the outside. But one of the questions I had is, is it not possible to have both an attached ADU and a JADU in the same property?
Yeah, we we've discussed that. Jolie can, Jolie might have a different opinion, but we, I think we landed on no.
Okay.
So.
Because I wondered, because that came up in the language later on.
Yeah. And you can absolutely have the integrated unit, so.
Okay, and so the only thing I would reiterate is I believe that the first thing on this chart should be that eight hundred and fifty square feet is the largest allowed studio slash one-bedroom unit and twelve hundred square feet is the largest allowed two-bedroom unit. And that way, we start at a place where people looking at it go, oh, that's the most I can do because that's the first thing that our clients ask. How big can I make it?
Yeah. Okay, um, thank you, Phoebe. Ronit, did you want to go next in terms of the categories and integrated, all that?
Sure, so I'm supportive of the recommended changes that Phoebe was suggesting to the categories. And also, the, in particular, you know, making it clear for people coming in, they don't have to build to the max, that they actually can scale, scale it to be smaller. That is our preference. And also supportive of the concept of the integrated ADU and Walter's request. I don't think we should deny in one step what we would allow in two steps. That just doesn't make sense to me, and since the whole purpose of this effort is to encourage construction of these ADUs, that feels like it is getting in the way. I'm also supportive of waiving the fees. We didn't talk about that. I don't know if we meant for that to be discussed later, but I think, again, if the intention is to encourage this, then make it less expensive. And with respect to the integrated, I'll just say I'm a little skeptical that they accomplish the intended purpose of actually providing more housing to it feel it it feels a little bit like it's just making some houses bigger, but the state has spoken on that issue, and so I I do agree that, you know, we get greater design control with these integrated ADUs and they really become just less obvious within the neighborhood to the extent that people care about them.
Okay. Thank you. David, did you want to go next?
Uh, sure. I I had a question too that maybe about an edit. How come we, there there was a change that was made, the word told was changed to suspended in section, I think it's subsection M. And I just wasn't sure what what the, if that change was correct and why and why we did that.
I made him do it.
How come?
Because I thought that the public wouldn't know what told meant.
Okay. Does it mean, okay?
It means suspended.
But does it, does the date run from the No, all right, it's not, okay. If we think it's clear, I'm good with it. I I think the proposed changes on the chart are are all, you know, sound very helpful and and that was very confusing, you know, I think, confusingly, I think those changes are all very good. I I the concern, the the Um I I the concern, the the issue raised over the attached dwellings, um I I think I agree with Ronit, I'm I'm fine with it if that's what the rule allows, but it does sound more like a way to build bigger houses than to truly add standalone units. But I will admit, I'm I'm somewhat skeptical about this entire approach as a way to truly address the housing crisis. And um and and then on a much larger level, I'm sure not not worth getting into, but is all these kinds of changes addressing the housing crisis? I mean, do we still go forward as if everything will remain the same? Or i- is there any thought given to how how what effect might the current crisis have on the pre-existing housing crisis? And maybe that's out of not something that we're here to discuss, but it's it's hard not to think about that and and wonder if we're talking about things that where where things have changed so much by the time this goes into place that we're our discussion is outdated already.
Sure, um yeah, definitely, uh thank you for that. Um and then Commissioner Arduho, did you wanna go? I think you're muted.
Yeah, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, regarding the uh square footage chart, uh we can go back to that. I mean, at the end of the day here, are we talking about a range of square footage, right? Uh from the minimum to the maximum. And I I guess I guess my question is, how do we make that crystal clear? And I'm not I'm not sure we're we're close to it at at this point. Um you know, there should it should be pretty straightforward information. There's a minimum uh size and a maximum size for both categories, right? Attached and detached. I mean, how do you know, how do we make that sort of quick to clear? Like even, I mean, right off the bat for me, five hundred square foot is the maximum size. What's the minimum size? Is there a minimum size?
No.
I'm sure if you if you if you pour into the document, there is.
Hundred.
Why couldn't we have that stated very clearly?
An efficiency unit.
No, I I get it, I'm sure it's, I'm sure the the language is there in the document. But why couldn't we have that noted very clearly here on the chart? Is my question.
Yeah.
I mean, why why not try to make this chart as useful as possible for people looking at it? You could even break down, break out, you know, add another column for square foot, you know, square footage pertaining to attached dom- uh attached ADUs versus detached. That's another way of handling it. But there's many different ways I think we can do it um to really, you know, help clarify we think uh certain information that to me, we may um not that clear. And I think it's it's uh it'll it'll be left up to a lot of different interpretations uh and ultimately lead to frustration. So I think we I think we kind of owe it to uh, you know, to ourselves and to the community to make this, you know, a a very effective a chart, you know, as as it should be. Uh that's one thing. Um I I do um, I don't, I don't necessarily have any objections to the idea of integrated ADU. Uh however, I think, you know, I'm I'm a little bit torn, because the massing of the existing house could change significantly with with uh with the integrated ADU. Um and I I wonder, you know, does that, is that, is that always seen as a as a as a better solution to having, rather than having a detached unit, uh maintaining, that helps to maintain the existing uh residential unit in a smaller mass? So, you know, to me, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it is. Um I can see a number of situations where adding something onto an existing mass uh could really dynamically change the look and feel of that that particular residential uh mass. And in some ways, something tucked away um towards the back or to the side may have less impact. Uh from at least from a street perspective, right? I think from a neighbor neighbor-to-neighbor perspective, of course, uh that could be, that could be more challenging scenario. Um however, from a kind of uh streetscape standpoint, there's a potential that it's actually less impactful visually. So I I wonder about that. But I think in principle, I I don't, I think I I think it's fair um that if you do take away square footage by integrating uh an ADU into an existing mass, that you should be able to um reclaim some of that. In principle, yeah. But I think, you know, again, I think it's uh then requires uh potentially a little bit more oversight, right? To ensure that the the proposed mass and the proposed steam um, you know, doesn't have a greater adverse impact visually.
Okay, um thank you, Duho. Um yeah, I'll just, my quick comments are just, I think, what what has been said already. I think that the table definitely needs to be a little bit more clear. Um I think that Phoebe's suggestion of breaking down the eight fifty and twelve hundred kind of by itself and then having the other numbers um as kind of separate, um not separate, but just, you know, visually so that it kind of is very clear of what the state is allowing and what um our say is. Um I think that would be really helpful. And then, um yeah, I think what's been said already about the integrated units, I think that I'm not opposed to the concept at all. I think that um there probably would have to be some type of cap, just so that um, you know, people uh wouldn't maybe take advantage of of the provision. Um so I don't know exactly what that would be at this moment, but I but I do think that the concept, I think, does make sense and it's very logical to think that if you're taking away some of the square footage, you should be able to reclaim some of it um somewhere else. Um but to uh I guess we just have to kind of probably see the language um to see that. Um so yeah, so that was it for for those. I think next up, if you want to.
Can I, sorry, can um could I, and as everyone was speaking, I was able to find some, it's really hard without the papers and I refuse to print out long documents, so that's my own fault. But um so I I think um Commissioner Lee had some excellent points. Um and also regarding the table, I mean, I don't know, should it be oriented by square footage? Couldn't it instead of be the rules for a JADU, an attached ADU? I mean, here we're 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 talking about the square footage as the defining category. Maybe that's part of what makes it so confusing. But um the one, the one point that I was looking for and couldn't find about the basement. So on page five, uh at the bottom, there's number two, letter I. And and this is what I was talking about, with if you look in the table, it talks about including basement areas. But here, it talks about the total floor area for an attached, this is the very last paragraph, for an attached accessory accessory dwelling, it shall not exceed twelve hundred square feet excluding basement areas and shall not be more than fifty percent of the floor area of the existing residence or proposed residence. So that, two I, the bottom of page five, is um not at all supported in that table either. So to me, that is um uh very confusing and contradictory then and needs to be addressed.
Okay.
I had a question on that same point from Sally.
Sure.
There's an attached accessory building, and I think um there should be a word fine. And every time it says attached, we should make sure that we mean only attached or we mean only detached or we mean both when we're talking about the regs. And the other point I wanted to reiterate is, since eight hundred square feet is the lowest mandatory threshold for what we must grant, I feel that might be a good number to use when Guido was starting to think about how to phrase the integrated hybrid model ADU. Because I think Duho had a good point, I think it was he who said, or maybe it was you, Meru, about there should be some number, a real number that we say this hybrid has a limit. It was you, Meru, so people don't take advantage of it in an evil way, but they use it to their benefit. And eight hundred feels to me like a good threshold, because it is the state minimum mandate.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yeah, I agree with that, actually. I think that would be, um that's a good number, in my opinion. Um if uh if no one has any comments about that category, then I guess we'll move on to daylight plane. Uh um if anyone wants to uh go first, um you can just maybe run through the same way. Sally, did you wanna?
I would actually prefer the architect's one first on this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh Phoebe, did you wanna?
Well, I had a couple of thoughts which are random, so I'm gonna warn you about that ahead of time. In the current, before we got into this revision, the daylight plane law for detached accessory buildings had a pitch. And then when you got to ten feet away from the property line, it went to the maximum, which at that point was twelve feet. And so what that meant was, if you wanted to have something that wasn't totally squished, you pulled it back ten feet immediately, because that allowed you the greatest leeway. And so I would like to suggest that we contemplate whatever we do for our five and twelve or six and twelve, whatever, that maybe the way to make it more enticing is to pick the number like ten feet, which we could be either rear or side or both, and say at that point, you can go to sixteen feet. Because from ten feet away, it would be unusual for someone to do a sixteen-foot-high cube. I think we're still more likely to get um a rising pitch. But what this allows is a cross gable. And so this is the part that I wanted to discuss as a secondary issue, which is the daylight plane, since I'm the one who's been around here longer than everybody else, was designed by someone who wanted to force all of Los Altos to stay into one style, one-story ranch-style houses. That's the history of it. And the fact is, when I started on planning commission many years ago, the big brouhaha that almost went to a referendum for the city was whether two-story houses would be allowed at all. And so that was really very divisive for the community, we managed to get past that. But because of that, the buildings were forced into what's a hip roof, where the roofs are like flat pyramids, where the roof slopes up in four directions, as opposed to a single gable like a Monopoly house, which has points at the end. Because the points at the end always broke the daylight plane one way or the other, if it was tucked in the corner of a lot. So you had to basically put the house in the middle of the lot in order to get those pointy areas from not breaking the daylight plane. So one thing I was thinking is that if we pull ten feet out and then raised the um the top, the 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 daylight plane stopped at the slope and jumped to sixteen feet is one way. The other is if we could in some way say that if you pull back ten feet, you're allowed to have one intrusion into the daylight plane, which might mean that you got houses where there was a single gable instead of a pyramid of a hip roof and you'd get a more diverse architectural style that might actually be more attractive. So with those two oddball things, I'll say that I really thought that Meru's comments at the end of the last meeting, which no doubt he memorized perfectly, was that it would be good to figure out what the goal is. If we have a six-foot property line fence and there's a six-foot person standing there, how far away does, say, a twelve-foot wall need to?
I can't hear her, so. Yeah, I think she got cut off.
She should do.
Yeah. Um. Broden. Oh man, she had a great point, I'm sure. Uh I I guess we can, hopefully she'll jump back on. Um uh Duho, did you wanna go next?
Yeah, uh sure, I mean, I um I think I think these uh these auction diagrams, to me, uh you know, they 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 feel like they're kind of missing key information, right? Um what what is what is it that we're, I I guess it's all about, the question is, what what is it that we're trying to achieve here? With this, with these alternative um um diagrams, right? Are we, are we trying to encourage that homeowners, you know, move their structure away from the property line in order to create a more favorable sort of distancing between uh, you know, the, you know, the, between their neighbors? Uh in terms of, you know, less impacted to the immediate neighbor? If that's the goal, then I think the diagrams need to talk about that a little bit more directly. Like if you, you know, again, what what's the incentive? If I pull away a little bit further, I can go taller or I can go higher. Uh or, you know, I can I can create a different style of architecture. I think I think that's the opportunity that these diagrams can begin, or that's the story that these diagrams can can begin to to tell uh a homeowner. And I think without without some other information uh on them, they um just, you know, they're they're just talking about different roof pitches. But I think I don't think that's the point, right?
Uh yeah, no, I agree. I think that um it's definitely to try to get a better feel for what type of building will we get um depending on the height and the distance and and, you know, what are we trying to really achieve, I would say.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, um Ronit, did you wanna go next? Oh, sorry, Duho, did you have more comments on that?
No, 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 so I I was gonna say, I I didn't get any of that sort of information, looking at those different options, right? I think I think they're missing that layer of information. Um because it could be a real sort of guide uh for for homeowners to make make, you know, sort of uh just, you know, very basic decisions on where to place their their unit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um Ronit, did you wanna go next?
Um sure, so I I I agree with both um Phoebe and Duho in terms of like first focusing us on what we're trying to achieve and then make sure we're we're achieving it. But I su- suspect that what we're trying to achieve is um to ensure that um, you know, we are, we are are making neighbors who are building ADUs um construct them in a way that feels less intrusive to their neighbor and dominating. And I think that's very subjective. I think that there will be some neighbors who perceive anything built closer than um what the home could be at is going to be offensive. And so we just have to call it at some point. And I think if we are consistent with what our best practices in other jurisdictions, I'm comfortable with that, because my comfort level um is gonna be very different than someone else and probably will um also um de- you know, depend, for some people, depend on this style of architecture. So to the extent that one daylight plane encourages a certain roof line versus another, which may be perceived, you know, as a different architectural style, I think we're just, we're really get, we're getting into a very subjective territory. So I would like to, you know, just stick to like an objective um standard that that we're being consistent with others and not overly rigid or particularly lenient.
Sure.
I guess then I'd wanna hear a little bit from staff, like where did we, like what, where are we landing compared to others?
Okay, um sorry, I just I just noticed Phoebe, I think is back on, um if I'm not mistaken. Phoebe, are you there? Uh maybe not. Um I thought I saw her for a quick second. Um if not, uh David, did you wanna go next?
Sure, I don't, I don't really have anything to add, though, on this topic.
Sure, I don't, I don't really have anything to add though on this topic where everyone discovered it.
Okay. Um, I guess my comments were that I I, so I went back and looked at the different, um, the different daylight planes and the different possibilities. My feeling was that eight foot at eight twelve slope, uh, I thought that that was a a kind of a reasonable number and and the reason it's eight to twelve is because just based on um, residents that have maybe some different challenges with their site um, in terms of flexibility of of what they want their, you know, ceiling height to be, or if they wanna do maybe a raised floor, I just thought that eight to twelve gave them a little bit more flexibility. So, instead of ten foot at the four-foot mark, it'd be ten foot eight inches. So it's not that much of a difference, but really the 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 two things. One thing is that they can get to a a slightly higher um, height as they step back, um, a couple feet more. Uh, whereas at the six to twelve, they might have to go uh, more far back and they might not have the room um, to to do that. So I just thought that that would be um, kind of a better way to go. And then also, um, I thought that last time when I suggested that you would have the six to twelve, and then if you basically push it back farther than you can get a, you know, one to one, I I just thought that having two different daylight planes, depending on how, I I thought that didn't really make sense and the logic. I couldn't come up with the logic for that. So, one suggestion I had was to have it be just eight to twelve as the standard. But if you voluntarily go below the eight to twelve, the same way that if you voluntarily step back um, eight or ten feet from the setback, then you could qualify for a reduction in um, fees or or some other incentive. So I thought that maybe that would make more sense because you you'd allow everyone to have a a higher slope. But if someone doesn't need that higher slope, then they could maybe have an incentive. Um, so, that was just my feeling on it. I don't know if others feel the same way. Also, to Phoebe's point, you would get to the maximum sixteen uh, sixteen height at twelve foot away at eight to twelve. At six to twelve, you'd get from sixteen foot away. And so, I don't know if a lot of people will be able to have it at sixteen, you know, just the logistics of sites. So, um, so eight to twelve was kind of my opinion on that. But um, I don't know how others feel, but I think I saw Phoebe, um.
Yeah, I mean, I think having two daylight planes is a tough one.
Yeah. Um, did you wanna finish your point, uh, Phoebe? I think you got cut off.
No, I I I had a screen meltdown, but. Um, but I, I missed a lot of Ronit's comments, but I did hear the part where she, I think is correct, that there are some people who will be unhappy to have anything adjacent to their property line, even ten feet away. Because it's a change and we know that people have difficulty with change. But um, we have more control on the integrated hybrid solution because as Duho pointed out, that may not be the best aesthetic solution. But we at least can control that because if it's a two-story house or um, or even a one-story that's unusual, it has to go through the design review committee as a house, whereas the ADU doesn't. So there's that piece. Um, I I think eight and twelve, again, for me, as I was doing the drawing exercises, some of which I sent to Guido, whether it's five and twelve, six and twelve, eight and twelve, it seemed to me that the differences were relatively small. So I felt much more comfortable saying, well, if you had a sixteen-foot wall, how far would it have to be from the house? From the next property, which also has a setback of let's say another ten feet on the side yard. So if it was twenty feet away and twelve feet tall, how would that feel? And that fell, I mean, or fourteen feet tall or sixteen feet tall, how would that feel? And that's why I was comfortable saying, pick any slope you want, five and twelve, six and twelve, eight and twelve's a little bit much. But let's say any of those, as long as at ten feet, if other commissioners agreed with me, it lifted to the maximum the way our previous code had it.
Um, yeah.
Did I leave it entirely?
Uh, maybe. I think David just kind of uh, had agreed with the most of the comments. I don't think, yeah, um.
I didn't, I don't think I commented yet on this one, cause I did.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Sally.
No, that's alright. I don't really have uh, too much to add. I mean, in terms of the, uh, I mean, I defer to you all that are architects, cause I I'm not the best one to speak on, you know, six twelve, five twelve, whatever. But I do wanna agree that um, if you look at the diagrams, they showed the pitch change, but the house was exactly the same in all those scenarios. And I think the point of the diagrams was supposed to be to show us what the house would look like in those different um, or the roof lines would look like in the walls in that daylight plane. So, um, we saw the slopes, but the house was just the same no matter what daylight plane you gave them. So, um, yeah, it didn't really help me um, visualize what the differences would mean.
Sure. Um, and then I guess I'll just uh, maybe ask staff to uh, Ronit's point about, uh, has staff looked at uh, where six to twelve or where eight to twelve would stack up against? I know Palo Alto's one-to-one, but um, is there a, is there a consensus of of where we would fall? Is the, is, yeah.
Uh, I don't think there's a consensus. Um, it seemed like a reasonable compromise at the last meeting in light of inputs that we received from builders and architects and whatnot, so. But you know, just like a lot of this ADU stuff, I don't know if there's necessarily consensus among cities for for that kind of, the 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 more technical aspect of our ordinance, so.
Okay. Um, alright, if 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 anyone has any other comments on on the daylight plane, I guess um, my preference would probably be eight to twelve, cause of uh, kind of what I mentioned. But um, we can move on to the third part, which is just miscellaneous or um, also I forgot to mention the incentives, if if maybe any commissioners have comments on on that issue. Um, or anything else that I might have missed.
I was miscellaneous wordsmithing.
Sure.
Time to do it. So, on page five under fourteen, fourteen point oh five oh, B isn't baby boy.
Hold on, hold on, let me get there.
Yes.
Fourteen, what is it? Page five, okay, go ahead.
Fourteen fourteen oh fifty, B isn't baby boy.
Uh huh.
Okay, so I was clarifying, this specifically says one detached single-family accessory dwelling unit and one JADU. And I asked you this earlier and you say, so you cannot have an attached ADU and a JADU, is that right?
That's correct.
I think maybe that should be stated. Um, and then on the same page, on item two, little i, this is one of the questions I had about um, is it the total floor area for an attached accessory dwelling unit? Or detached, I believe. I think it needs to say both.
Phoebe, I'm trying to capture your edit.
Go back, go back up. It's two, all right, so that's the property shall not have, yes? I mean, you can, you can play with it because I'm sure you have better language, but that I think is important to say. Okay, then if you go down to item two, little i below, there it is. I think it's both attached and detached. The total floor area for an attached and detached accessory dwelling shall not exceed twelve hundred square feet. Or is this going to where Sally was asking about what we need to say if the excluding the basement area of the main house, which would then clarify how the, the, hmm, how it was determined? So, I'll leave that to you, but then item little i two has the same issue. The total floor area for detached accessory dwelling shall not exceed this, including basement areas of what? Basement areas of the ADU or of the main house? So I think that's where it needs to be worked on. Um, underneath uh, E under height, if you go to number one.
I'm sorry, what's, what's, what's?
Your E, your E height, so we're rolling down now. E height, you've taken out the number two because that was a a Scribner's error. And then if you continue down, we have a clerical error which says that a little further down, a single-family residential accessory dwelling unit must not encroach upon the required front or side yard, not street side yard. Because I think, did, did we get to keep that in or not? Are we doing twelve feet on our side yard? Oh God, did you lose me again?
The state asked us to take out the twelve foot.
The twelve.
Okay, so then you need to take out street from the word street side yard in F one and in F two. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good, cause my screen has frozen again. This has not been the best.
Oh, right. So one, and then what was the other one? Sorry.
Two, well, in both those places, F one and F two, it says street side yard, and I think it needs to just say side yard. And then, when we go down to fourteen fourteen point eighty on the voluntary additional setback, um, again, it has four feet from the interior side setback. And in fact, it has to just say side setback, cause the state made you take it out. And then
Where?
Uh, fourteen fourteen eighty, it's under voluntary additional setback.
Well, I mean, that's voluntary, I mean, that's.
No, but you, it says four feet from the interior side, and it should just say side yard. Because there's no differentiation from interior and street side yard. And then we haven't really figured out what this voluntary additional setback thing is gonna be anyway. So that's it for my wordsmithing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, Sally, did you wanna go next? Any miscellaneous?
Yes, I have some. I'll try to um, direct with page numbers. So um, starting with uh, page seven, um.
Let me get there, let me get there.
Yeah, page seven.
Okay.
And and the very top on G for detached ADU uh, daylight plane, your note says HCD is okay with daylight plane so long as it does not prohibit the construction of an eight hundred fifty square foot ADU. I think that text that you put in the note is very important to include. Because we just, we just go on and talk about the daylight planes. But the bottom line is, the daylight plane becomes um, unenforceable the moment it prohibits the construction of an eight hundred fifty square foot ADU. So, my proposal is that your note text is important. Down at the bottom of that same page, um, I talks about parking. And it talks about one additional uncovered parking space of nine by eighteen. And I personally don't remember that we actually defined a nine. I I understand that nine by eighteen is a standard in the city, but um, maybe I'm wrong, maybe we did talk about that, but I don't see that that, I mean, some of these are gonna be street spaces or driveway spaces, you know, we, I don't think um, we need to have that measurement. Did, did we talk about that? Am I just not remembering it?
I believe, I believe we did, I believe we did.
Yeah, I think we did.
I asked for it. Because I thought it was important if someone was going to put a paved parking space at a detached accessory structure, that they should know how big it had to be.
Well, that's, that's a good point. So maybe then that should actually say that. Because to me, it almost says then if they're gonna be parking um, in a s- a driveway or a pathway, then then the nine by eighteen. So maybe it needs to talk about that as being um, if you're, well, I I don't know what the wording would be, but I don't think nine by eighteen necessarily applies to all scenarios where there could be an additional um, uncovered parking space.
I couldn't figure out where it wouldn't apply, cause if it didn't comply with that, it wouldn't be a parking space. And if it was required, it had to meet the standard.
Um, I'm just thinking of like some houses have two driveways and one could be narrow and, well. But but I guess if you're adding something, then that criteria could fit. So it, that's fine. I I just didn't recall that part of the conversation. So that, if if everyone's fine with that, then that's, uh, let's leave that. Um, so then moving on, scrolling to page eight in J, the whole big design standards, uh, blue and yellow at least in the version that we got. Um, you actually talk about accessory dwelling units over eight hundred fifty-one square feet. And what you really are intending to say is either over eight hundred fifty, or you wanna say eight hundred fifty-one or greater. But over eight hundred fifty-one square feet means you're talking about eight hundred fifty-two. And no, none of the rule would apply to eight hundred fifty-one. That's a minor uh, nuances. Scrolling on to page nine, uh, the second number two from the top, uh, I don't know what that is. For accessory dwelling units that are eight fifty-one square feet or greater, duh, and then it ends.
Floating sentence.
Yeah, so all that numbering, that whole page, the numbering and and that sentence, it um, probably needs some rationalizing. Um, so. Anyway, so that, that I think are the miscellaneous uh, comments that I had.
Did we ever get a consensus on whether our ordinance should or should not allow a hundred and fifty square feet on the JADU for ingress or access by stairs or something?
Not yet.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. That might be some, yeah.
We've talked about the fact that some municipalities are saying JADUs can be bigger. And some are saying that the hundred and fifty can only be used for, as the state says, access to the JADU. Is Jolie still around?
Maybe not. Hello, yes, I am.
Jolie, is the state?
My understanding is the one fifty that could be greater, that you could have a hundred and fifty more for access.
Okay, so that's a state rule, thank you.
Yeah.
So why don't we have it? We, ours is struck?
Uh, it it struck, well, the the conversation last time was uh, we should call that out, but it actually is further down in the ordinance. It actually.
Oh, good.
It specifically says that in C, but the conversation at the last meeting was, hey Guido, you should stick that in the ordinance. And then I was like, oh, wow.
It's actually in the ordinance.
It's already there, so.
It's in a different place, I apologize, thank you.
Okay, um, and then Sally, uh, before I move on to the, did you have any uh, thoughts about any incentives? Um, just so that is, besides the voluntary setback, should we maybe reconsider something?
Um, I thought that that we, there was interesting discussion a little earlier that that sort of came close to hinting at being incentives. And now I don't um, recall the specifics, was that um, well, I say, no, I think it was the talk about the integrated ADUs, um, where if you actually allowed that as an option, um, again, putting in mechanism so someone's not taking, necessarily trying to take advantage, um, but really trying to do attaching it rather than plucking, plump, plumping it in the middle of the um, backyard or the side of the backyard, then that could be an incentive. So now we have no writing about really how to um, structure that, so that's um, a big task. And uh, you know, I do wanna acknowledge Duho's. Uh comment that it does potentially then. Add more uh mass and bulk to the house, though, so. Which may affect the streetscape more, but presumably the neighbor who would be impacted by a detached ADU. Particularly within four feet of the, the setbacks. Might prefer that the streetscape took the hit versus the neighbor, again, it's a balance, so I, I don't know. Who gets the priority, but to me, i- it, if we make an attempt at making that, you can go beyond. Your house can be bigger than it would otherwise be, if you're using this allowable ADU um square footage. Then that could be the good neighbor incentive.
Okay, great. Um, Ronit, did you wanna uh speak on miscellaneous or incentives or anything else?
I, I don't have any, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with all those suggestions under the miscellaneous that um. Sally and Phoebe raised, and under the incentives. I was, I had been talking about also the reduced fees before, and I'm supportive of those.
Okay. Um, David, did you wanna go next? Any comments?
No, I have no comments on the, those issues.
Okay. Um, Duho, did you wanna speak on anything?
Yeah, no, likewise, I, I, I don't have any additional comments, uh other than what the other commissioners have, have already brought up. Uh, just, just a quick one on the incentive, I think the uh, the integrated uh option. Uh, in some sense, is, is, is a good incentive, right, in its own right. I think not having an ADU uh on the property uh for tak- taking up room. Uh in, um, in, in the, what would most likely be a side yard or a rear yard. I think that's a, that's, that's a good incentive already, right?
Okay, great. Um, yeah, I agree with uh Phoebe and Sally's comments, and I think also as well, I think the. Um integration of a unit could definitely be a, a, a good incentive, and. I think it matches perfectly since it's, you know, naming it a new category might get confusing, so having it as that might work. So I guess with, with that, um, I'll just, I guess try to see if they, we have a consensus. And then maybe we can see if it's ready to kind of be put together. I think the table, in, in terms of the table, I think we all kind of gave our comments on how that should be um modified. Um, and then in terms of the integrated unit. Not to exceed um eight hundred square feet, I think is what Phoebe had mentioned. And then having that as a, as, as an incentive. Um, I, I'm wondering if we have a consensus for, for that.
But you're, you're already allowed um. To have, you're already allowed to have an attached ADU part of the house, so.
Oh, okay, I, I guess the, maybe I phrased it wrong, I guess the, what we were talking about in terms of the integrated unit and then making it up. With, with the rest of the house, the kind of what Phoebe had.
What you, what you gave up in the house, you get compensation up to the maximum FAR plus eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, I don't know if, I mean, I defer to the commission, but I mean. City staff is not gonna allow somebody to go above the FAR for a lot, so that's, that's just. I, I think where the confusion lies is, is that if I'm being honest, I don't think I fully explained it to the commission. Last time, and there was some confusion in terms of Walter and having his technical issues today. But what he said makes sense, that you, you can't go past the FAR for a house. You can add the eight hundred integrated into the house. And then conceivably, as long as you don't go past the FAR. You could conceivably get that square footage, and that, that's clear, I, I don't know. I defer to the commission once again, but I, I understand what the commission's saying. Uh but, but creating a new category, I don't know if that's. I, yeah, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I, this is Jolie, I'm not sure that, I mean, I think we're gonna have to look at that some more, I'm not sure HCD. Is going to. Um, I mean, I think that they'll, you know, they'll. Tell us, we can check with them about this integrated model, but um. Guido, I have a concern about the integrated ADU. Is sort of morphing the JADU. And allowing a larger JADU, I mean. Are you seeing it that way? Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm just wondering how HCD is going to look at this. And us making a new, sort of a new category, and I'm willing to do that, but um.
Yeah, I don't know about Guido.
Can it be eight hundred in the house when there was a limitation of five hundred? No, I think, I think what we're talking about, because we shouldn't call it a junior ADU. Because it's a different animal. Because we're saying that it could be as big as eight hundred square feet. As long as you use some part of your house. To con, to, that you then added on to, but you got to take that other piece and. Add it somewhere else, and that's where I think I hear Guido being uncomfortable, that. Up to eight hundred square feet, in theory, you could be over the FAR, cuz if you're in your maximum FAR. And wanted to put in an eight hundred square foot ADU, you are allowed to do it. The FAR was not the limiting factor, it was that eight hundred. Square foot. Declared cannot be turned down by the state amount. And what this does is it says this is not a junior ADU, this is a different animal. We'll call it a hybrid ADU, but the same, the same totals would occur. You would be allowed to have as much as seven hundred ninety-nine square feet, though that wouldn't happen. But you'd have to take some part of your house, and you're allowed to then. Put that part you removed back in, even if you were above the maximum FAR.
I mean, it, part of this is so confusing is because um. The integrated thing is really not new, as I said earlier, there's, there's an integrated um. JADU, because that by definition is part of the house, and then there's attached ADUs. That um aren't JADUs, and if you get, this is back to that page five, the bottom. Where we say the total floor area for the attached ADU shall not exceed one thousand two hundred square feet. Excluding basement areas, so it's not just, so that's definitely, that's an attached. Integrated up to twelve hundred square feet. A unit, so, so we're not doing a very good job in our terminology of describing these different scenarios, I think. I thought the point that Walter had been trying to make more so, last week he made. More so the point about why he wasn't, why they weren't allowed to do it, which was because they. You know, you can be maxing out the FAR with the house and still plop an ADU elsewhere. On the site regardless, so he's saying, well, why can't we use that space and fiddle around, or at least I, that's what I interpreted, but. So I think we're having some uh difficulties with. Some of the phraseology, cuz if you look at the bottom of page five, you see we are allowing twelve hundred square feet as an attached accessory dwelling unit.
But you're not using any of the existing house, I think that's the, the typical. Is if you wanna take existing house and turn it into part of an ADU. And add on to it, so you go up to eight hundred square feet, for example. Then the part that you use from the house, you shouldn't have to give up, you should be able to give it up, use it elsewhere.
Well, it doesn't really define, sorry, it doesn't really define whether that's existing house or not, it just says an attached or detached.
Yes, it's being a different definition, I think it's a very interesting hybrid.
But to the, to the chair, if the, and the vice chair, uh, you know, we are gonna. Run this by state HCD if the commission rules favor, before it goes to council, so I will get. Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna adopt an ordinance that the state doesn't support, so if.
Yeah.
Sure.
If the commission would indulge staff to allow us to. If the motion's made such that, for that particular issue, that we would follow up with the state. And make whatever necessary modifications, if the commission's okay with that.
Sure, um, I, I do, and also to add, I do think that going over the FAR, maximum FAR. Um, part of me feels like that might cause some issues, um, and I, I don't know, I wouldn't wanna base a new kind of language on. Just kind of one project, that, one example that we're seeing, so. Um, I guess just maybe check and see, but. If it doesn't exceed the FAR, then I think it, it does make sense, but I mean, again, it's, it's a little confusing in terms of why they wouldn't be able to do that already, but. I guess, um, Guido, you'll, you'll check on that. Um, and then I guess the daylight plane, um, I think I had mentioned eight to twelve, but we had had six to twelve. And then Phoebe had mentioned at, at ten foot, it could go up to the maximum. Just wanna ma- make sure that we have, I guess, a consensus to give to um, uh, city council.
Can I, can I suggest that we maintain it at six to twelve?
Sure.
I, I, I think there's, I think there's enough um. Uh, room there for expression. You know, for architectural expression wi- within that uh framework. Of the eight foot and six to twelve.
Okay, um, did you have a? Did you have an opinion on, on Phoebe's suggestion of at ten foot, it could go up to, cuz I just checked, so.
Yeah.
At six to twelve.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, I, I don't, I, I would agree to that, I don't object to that at all, yeah.
Okay, cuz at, at six to twelve, at ten foot, you'd be at thirteen, so it's not that much, I just wanted to mention that, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Sally and Ronit, um, and David, uh, did you have any thoughts?
That's, that's good, good, I think.
Okay.
To the, to the chair, I have the ordinance, so. So it, the, the language, if people can read it, um, the daylight plane starts at a height of eight feet at the property line. And proceeds inward at a six twelve. Slope, and then at ten feet, what's the verbiage that I can?
Um, at ten feet, uh, it would be possible to, to go to the maximum that the state allows, which is sixteen feet. Okay. Um, uh, sorry, Ronit, did you have any comment or consensus?
I said, I, I agree.
Okay, um, David, um.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, and then Phoebe, I'm sure, uh, you're okay with that.
Well, since I proposed it, I am.
Yeah.
Could we also think about um having uh? If you pull back. You can have one daylight plane intrusion of, say, no more than five feet in length. To allow for a gable as opposed to a. Hmm hip roof?
Kind of hard to enforce as staff, but.
Okay, well, I, I'm, I proposed it, and Guido, if you, if staff can't support it, I, I don't know.
No, no, I, I'm not, I'm not the commission, I defer to the commission, I'm just saying that. You know, we get into these tips with customers about, well, it's this pitch and it's that, it's obviously from an enforcement perspective, it's easier just to say. This is it, but I, once again, I'm not, I'm, I'm here supporting the commission, so.
Well, I have to say Palo Alto has had that exception for. Dormers for many years, and they don't seem to have any trouble enforcing it.
Okay, okay. I defer to the commission on that, so.
Um, yeah, sure, sure, does, does anyone wanna um? Kind of speak on, on the intrusion aspect? Um, Sally or Duho? Or Ronit?
Uh, so, 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 okay, um, I, I don't think I caught all of that, um, if I can just. Uh, Phoebe, if, if you don't mind, um, running through that scenario again?
Well, what I, what I was trying to do was see if, was a way that we could allow. Single gable houses to be. In the backyard, instead of forcing them all to be hip roofed.
Yeah.
So. I, I propose that if you pull back, if you pull your, your detached accessory unit back, you still may not be able to have. A single gable, because the top of the point will break the daylight plane. And so I was wondering. Now that we've got it so that the daylight plane disappears at ten feet. I don't think it's, it's something I could, I would have to make it at eight feet, you could have one intrusion. I would like to withdraw this, because I think we've just mooted it.
Yeah, if you're allowed to go up to, you know, maximum sixteen, I mean, that, that. That sort of uh gives you the indication that you should be pulling, in, in order to have that architectural feature or style, you should be pulling back.
Exactly.
The uh, the volume, yeah, yeah.
So I, I withdraw that one, guys.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Okay, so I think that uh, there's consensus on that, and then. I think that was it, if I'm not mistaken, um, as far as, yeah.
To the chair, if the chair would indulge me. Just on the parts that I, at least as staff that I'm not. I, I won't run through every edit, cuz we've already done that. So I've, if everybody can see, there was a request to add a minimum size. I've done that. I've added some verbiage about, I took Phoebe's language that she sent me yesterday. Relative to the fifty percent rule, an ADU of eight hundred square feet or smaller cannot be denied in terms of the fifty percent. Uh, I added the language that said. The largest. A one bedroom can be is eight hundred and fifty square feet. That one, I don't know if the state actually, a little worried about that, cuz, I mean, you, yeah, but I'll follow up with the state. Let me just make sure there's any other things that I'm not, sorry.
They don't, they don't refer to bedrooms anymore, so that's one, why I'm thinking that one is gonna. Refer to it for the twelve hundred, for two bedrooms, or a thousand feet for two bedrooms, but. I, isn't the rule that they, they mentioned bedroom with the twelve. Hundred square feet, but we can leave it in there, but I thought that they no longer define it by bedroom. So I think that, I think the state's gonna kick that one back, but um, but we can leave it in.
So is the commission okay with the hundred and fifty square feet?
Um, I, just, just as a point of clarification, I'm happy to add it if the commission requests, but. I'm pretty sure they actually wrote into one of the bills. You're not supposed to define the minimum size, which is weird. Because in one of the legislations, they specifically said. You can have an efficiency unit, and by the health and safety code, it has to be a hundred and fifty square feet, so that's another one that. I'll have to follow up with the state on, so if the, once again, if the motion is stated to be that. Staff will follow up on. The hundred and fifty square foot and the hybrid model, then that, that gives me the discretion to make edits after the meeting, if that, that's the wish of the commission.
Guido, should the hundred and fifty square foot additional for access also be, for the junior ADU also be in this table?
Sure, but that. If, if, is that, if that's the direction of the commission.
Well, you have that in, that's what you have written in, in, when I asked you about it before, it's actually in our code.
Okay, so, so the hundred and fifty, so. The policy decision that the commission and council have to make are. The strict interpretation of state law, if, you can do a hundred and fifty square foot addition. For a JADU for ingress egress purposes. And then that's it. Uh, some cities are saying you can blow out the back wall.
Oh.
Add a bunch of square footage, and then drop the junior ADU in that as part of the remodel. Because some people are, when I talk to other planners in other cities, they're saying, well. That is more streamlined than a strict interpretation of the state law, which says the hundred and fifty. And then technically, you would have to go back and add the JADU after the fact, and I don't have a dog in this fight, that's really for the commission and council. And I did present a slide that showed the cities are kind of, everybody's all over the board on that particular policy issue.
I'm not sure I even understand it, you just explained it, Guido.
Yeah, well, it's, the way the statute reads is it. You can have a.
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't explain it well enough, so.
Yeah, but the, yeah, cuz we, we. Yeah, but the, yeah, because we, we talk about this all the time. So the, the JADU is supposed to be within the, um, the dwelling, the, the main dwelling unit, and I forget the language, but it sound, it's like within, within like the four corners of the dwelling unit. And, but then there's something about the, um, the proposed or the, yeah, or the proposed dwelling unit. Some people say, well, that's if you're going to build a whole new unit, you can include the, the JADU. Other people say, oh, well, propose means you're blowing it out to add the JADU. So and thi- this definition and this interpretation has changed over the last, I would say, six months or more. And so, um, it's, it's just, that's why last time I said you can't do it, because that was my understanding. And now we've talked to other jurisdictions, and we've also run it by HCD. And HCD right now is saying, oh, well, you can do it, but who knows, next HCD, they may have changed their mind, so. You just, this is all
I understand the confusion now. It's not you, Guido, it's the state.
Okay.
I have to tell you that I, I also, from my historic memory, I know the woman who proposed and got this, the J, the junior ADU approved by the state of California. And her original intention was that people would take a master bedroom suite in the back of their house that had a bathroom attached and a bedroom, and stuff in the world's tiniest kitchen, and it would be allowed as a secondary unit. That was the intent. And so I think that's coloring my understanding of this, because what I hear Jolie saying, and what I heard Guido saying now, is that potentially, the cities are looking to see if the state would allow them to make junior ADUs larger.
Yes.
And we don't know until we run up the flagpole and see how it flies.
Um, so to the chair, I've made some edits. I just, I'm asking for direction from the commission. Do you, does the commission support these edits or not? I, I just want some direction.
Guido, could you read it to me? Because my screen is frozen, and I've already had to restart my computer three times.
In the, in the 14025, the square footage chart.
Yes.
I've added 150 square feet, the minimum size of, of an efficiency unit as defined by the Health and Safety Code, and 150 square feet can be added to a JADU if doing so is for ingress egress purposes.
And that's straight from the state law?
Yes. And then further down, I took your edit, Phoebe, and to the 800 square foot in terms of the 50% rule, I put your verbiage relative to the 50% rule, and ADU of 800 square feet or smaller cannot be denied.
So, is there an alternative language if the commission was interested in di- in seeing if the state would grant us the ability to make a junior ADU larger? I'm not proposing it, I'm just interested.
Interested.
I mean, since you can still do, um, an, an accessory, an ADU in a place that's not required to be 800 square feet, then why do we have to? I mean, I don't know why the JADU has, potentially goes bigger, I would think, because people have the flexibility to have the attached, an attached ADU within their home that fits ADU requirements rather than JADU. So I don't see that that would be adding much.
Can, this is John, I, I wanna raise a, a question to the commission. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be beneficial for us at the staff level to go back and rework this table and sort of reverse it here how it's done, and create a column that has the various categories of ADUs. In a general term, you have the JADUs, the attached, the detached. And then the next column would include what we have there in the, in the first column, which is a square footage, or other, other restrictions that apply to that particular category of ADU. And that, that might present a clear picture for us at the staff level, the planning commission, the council, and even the state to, to evaluate and review.
Yeah, I suggested that earlier, and I think that's the way to go, because this
We've always been the same thing, that we just needed to be
Right.
easy for someone to look at and get it.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to go back and re, I, I think we need to go back and rework this table and, and bring it back to the commission to, to take a look at.
And please, again, when, if you're looking at the 1,200 square footage thing, which we haven't even got to, it's not showing right here. But, um, you're, you're not being consistent with the bottom of page five. I know I'm harping on that, but I'm, uh, so if you scroll down to that 1,200 square foot, um, what it says, the way you've got it categorized now, and what John was just suggesting would help you solve that.
Exactly.
Um, I, I can't, where are you?
And then clarity as to what, what basement, where, how, how the definition of basement fits into the category would help a lot, too.
Yeah, because basement is treated one way in a detached ADU and another way in an attached ADU, so.
And that's, that's part of our existing code, and, and that was something that was arrived at, at, at the council level when they adopted the existing code.
Yeah.
I think if you're willing to do it, John and Guido, I think it would be terrific.
Okay, we can, we can do that.
Yeah. Cause I, for one, am not willing to send this on without looking at what all the edits look like with, with fresh eyes. It's just too much.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you. I would want the commission to take a look at that and, and give it their blessing.
So are we back to, um, our move that we continue adaptation, a recommendation of this ordinance revision until the next meeting?
Uh, can I just, I was, I was trying to go through the ones, I was just trying to make sure I captured all the edits and.
I think it's very hard for, at least I'll speak for myself, to sit here and and ha- have it done as an editing rather than sort of absorb, and I know, John, you've been absorbing that, and so it would really be helpful if the two of you could take the editing offline. I mean, just, I personally, um, i- it's just, it's a hard process for all of us to sit and, and watch the edits, at least for me.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely do that. We can go in and, um, work on the table and have a, a clean version to bring back for, to the commission to, to review.
But I think we made progress, guys. I really do.
Agreed.
Yeah, so, um, so I think that there's, there is definitely consensus on the daylight plane, so that's kind of done. And then, um, in terms of just the part of the language, um, and then the kind of incentives, so the, the thing that we have to see is the table, and then maybe if staff could, um, figure out the hybrid just so that we kinda have a better idea before we send it off to city council, if, if that's even possible. Um, uh, so yeah, but I think that we, we definitely all had consensus on stuff, so. Uh, if we wanna have a motion to continue, I think, um,
I'm, I'm just, I'm still trying to, just, I don't wanna have to come back for, you know, so the voluntary additional setback, did we land on the eight, eight feet with the 812 roof pitch?
No, that's, yeah, that would be eliminated. The only voluntary would be, um, the setbacks. Um, yeah.
Oh, so, oh, but there's no incentive for, okay.
Yeah. And then I guess, I guess, you know, the fact that the height can go to 16 at 10 feet, but that's, that's, I guess, part of it too, but not really part of it, I guess.
Okay.
Well, actually, maybe we should leave this for Jolie to, to work with you. If there's some way that we can get financial incentive for good behavior, it sounds like what Sally pointed out earlier is whatever financial incentive in order not to trip into the, um, prevailing wage issue, it has to be for everybody. We can't specifically aim at good behavior. Is that correct, Jolie?
She's muted.
Yes, that's, we would need to, you know, do it across the board, so, um.
So we can't, we can't use money as an incentive?
Well, I can, it's just that if you, if you're going to grant monetary incentives to, um, one, you know, one person, one project, that's getting to be, getting into, um, use of public monies, you know, in a private project. So that's why we're trying to set the fees at zero or do something across the board. But, I mean, I've, I've tried to be as creative as possible, but we can, we can bat it around some more and see if we can come up with something that. So I, I, I can look at it some more.
I mean, I have to say I do not support zero fees, period. I don't think it's, at this time, we should even think about it, going back to what David had said earlier. But if, if you're not granting it to everyone, but only granting it to a select group, not just one project, but a select group who are choosing to follow a different set of rules, is that the same thing?
Then we can, I can look at that.
Thanks, Jolie.
I'll try.
Well, it's because I think Ronit said, the thing that people really listen to is money.
Mm-hmm. No, and that's the problem is, you know, when you have downtown areas or uh, where you wanna, because you, you don't have redevelopment monies anymore, or you might not have a redevelopment agency. So you try to incentivize to get, you know, property frontages or properties improved. And so you go and try to, you know, reduce the permit fees or waive permit fees. And you're trying to help them, and then it ends up triggering prevailing wage. And so it, it, it's really, it, yeah, it's just a trap. So you wanna help people, um, but then you have to say, oh, well, it's gonna trigger, it, you know, may trigger prevailing wage, so. And, so we'll look at it some more. Maybe we can come up with a classification where it won't be, uh, it won't trigger something. It's worth a try. Thank you.
Yeah, and then also, uh, you know, the financial, uh, the reduction in, in fees, if we offer that, you know, it's like, what, what type of thing would we want because of that? So, you know, what do we value in terms of, do we value the units being farther back and having a, kind of a shorter height? Or do we just value just developing more of these ADUs because of the housing prices? So, um, I don't know what we would attach it to in terms of what the city would value the most, but I definitely think just promoting more of these, I think, is, is the most important. Um, anyways, um, all right, so I guess that we will, uh, continue this.
I, I moved to continue this to the next meeting. I think I said that, so I need a second.
Second.
I second. Okay. And then, um, if you wanna do a roll call?
Sure, um, Chair Ahi.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bodnar.
Aye.
Commissioner Bresik.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Duho Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Merrick.
Aye.
Commissioner Meadows.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, um, next.
So, John, so just to make sure that's to a date certain, correct, so we don't renotice?
I, I heard, uh, Commissioner, yes, Bresik say to the, to the next meeting, which would be May the 21st.
Okay, so then we won't have to renotice.
Correct.
Okay, um, next up, commissions reports and comments. Anyone have any?
Oh, I, I listened to, uh, Jolie's presentation at city council and then the state laws, and I understand you'll probably do a, um, repeat, an encore performance for planning commission.
Yeah, I, I listened in to that as well. Uh, that was really informative, I thought.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, anyone else have any reports or comments? Um, if not, then potential future items, uh, John?
Sure, um, let's, got a couple things to report on for you. Uh, your next, next city council meeting is on May the 12th, and there's a couple of items of interest to the planning commission on that agenda. You have Palo Alto Housing, which is our affordable housing partner here in the city. Uh, they're going to be doing a workshop on our affordable housing waiting list and some amendments to the current process, and the current process is a little bit archaic in that people have to apply for affordable units every time one of these units becomes available. This would create sort of an ongoing waiting list, and people would be notified when the units become available. And then the other thing the council will be taking up at a kind of workshop session is a presentation by our circulation consultant, Hexagon, and they'll be doing a presentation on the level of service and the new change to vehicle miles traveled, which are new way, which is a new way to measure, um, circulation impacts through the environmental review process. Doesn't mean that we have to give up level of service when we're evaluating projects, but for purposes of the California Environmental Quality Act, we have to move or migrate towards this vehicle miles traveled, um, type of analysis. So, um, that'll be interesting. And then for your, your next meeting, which is on the May, May the 21st, um, we will have the ADU regulations coming back to you. We're going to have our city attorney provide that housing law update to you. We'll also be having Hexagon come to the planning commission meeting and present the VMT to LOS service, uh, presentation that they're gonna share with council on, uh, Tuesday of next week. And then Guido's going to be providing an overview of a state bill or senate bill 330 and that process, and that's part of the, the new state housing laws that went into effect at the beginning of this year and ties in nicely to the, um, the presentation by the city attorney. And that's it on your horizon for the, the next month.
Okay. Thank you so much, John. Um, if, if that's it, then, uh, is there anything else? Anyone else?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, so yeah, everyone, please stay safe and, uh, meeting is adjourned. It's 9:27.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Be well.
Thank you.
Thank you.